Thanks for joining us today on Dead Day. We thought this was a great opportunity since no classes today that everyone that wanted to participate could. Our agenda today is transformation and realignment. I'm going to tee that up briefly in a minute. But the bulk of the presentation is really focusing on the work that's been done this last year, this academic year. Will be presented by Executive Vice President Zora Mulligan and Provost John Jazinski with help from a fabulous team of deans that are somehow all sitting down in the front row here. And after that presentation, that probably combined will take an hour or less, then I will come back up and lead question and answer period. And everyone will be available for questions and no subject is off limits. And so whether we talked about it today or not, you're free to ask about it and we'll do our best to provide answers. We have our whole leadership team or the great bulk of them in the audience as well that I can rely on if I need help. And so questions, you know, you have seen this slide. You know how this works, right? And so on Zoom, use the Q and A function. Now to our friends on Zoom, don't write a book, don't write a four paragraph question, right? That would be a four paragraph email that you would send to me and I promise I will read it and either respond to it or ask the appropriate person to do so, right? But use the Q and A question to ask real questions and Suzanne Shaw, who will be tracking that with her team will ask the question aloud on your behalf. And then for those of you in the room here, we've got two mics that'll be passed, just stand up, ask for a mic and we'll take your questions as many as we can. Our goal is to be done by three because assuming it's not raining, we've got a celebratory event for everyone who contributed to the onward upward campaign out at the John Goodman Amphitheater. And I hope you will join us there. All right, transformation. Transformation is happening all across the university. And so John and Zora have been leading not only in our academic framework, but with employer partnerships with enrollment redesign and work in research, in data, in advising, in consolidation, in identifying peer universities and on and on and on. Transformation is across the university. A part of that transformation is the work we have done and will be doing in the next two years as we invest in our health science and fine arts facilities. By the way, the underpass is open. I walked through it today. Thank you, Matt Morris and team. But on the Monday after commencement, we began a two-year project completely renovate and expand newly named Blunt Hall. That that literally starts in a little over a week and other projects coming their way. We had our best year in Jefferson City, probably in decades. Certainly since I've been here, we have significantly changed our staff employment policies, several of which will be improved to give more flexibility for as we start the next year. We completed the largest comprehensive campaign in university history and you know, that's transformative. When I started 12 years ago, we were giving out over a little over a million dollars in student scholarships this last year. Because of the great work Brent and his team have been doing over the past decade, we gave out three and a half million dollars in scholarships for students to attend the university. Lots of technology innovations in process and so on and on and on. We have had a very successful year as we reached the halfway point of our two-year transformation plan. So what's what's year two look like? Well, we're not going to focus a lot on that today, but but let me say there is lots of work to be done on implementation, right? There, there are policy revisions that need to be done, tenure and promotion guidelines that need to be reworked as as departments combine or combine into schools. There's website redesign that needs to be done, marketing and communication plans, there are personnel issues to be handled, there's curriculum to be developed. And it could be messy, but but we're on a good path. And I look forward to implementing the really good work that our teams have done so far. And we're not done, right? This is a continuous improvement policy, not a review our framework every 30 years strategy. And so there's more work that will naturally come as we see how the first or second phase of this work rolls out. And we're happy to talk about that and we'll talk about it in more detail at our town hall in the fall. When we do our state of the university and really preview what's what's the work that we'll all be working on then. All right, uh, let's get started on on the meat of the of the substance then. And and you know, as you all know, our number one driver this year is enrollment. Transformation has to drive enrollment. And when we talk about enrollment, we're talking not only about recruitment, but retention and graduation. And it has to be connected to our academic programs. And to give you an update of the work that she has been leading, let me turn it over to Zora Mulligan.
All right. Good afternoon. Terry Weber, can you hear me? That's good. All right. Thank you, Terry. I just wanted to start by noting that this work on enrollment and on retention started a long time before I joined Missouri State University. The university's SEM plan, the Strategic Enrollment Management Plan, set forth specific targets in terms of growth and enrollment, as well as growth and retention and graduation rates. The long range plan certainly contemplates a future that includes a growing university, more opportunities for partnerships with employers and other community members. So this work certainly was underway long before I came. And we have been making slow and steady progress toward those goals up until 2020, when COVID really disrupted our progress. So when people ask, why change? Is this really necessary? I say that it is because we've identified these goals, we've agreed that they're important and we won't get there through natural growth alone. So in terms of the the year that we're now wrapping up, 22, 23, we have done a lot of things in marketing and in partnership with other parts of the university, including admissions, certainly. Our focus has been in a lot more areas than this, but the highest level summary of the important things we did was number one, we created a new scholarship, most state access. We increased energy around students from the 417. At the beginning of this year, we had a great conversation with the Board of Governors about the areas where we had really significant opportunities to grow. And there was a general observation that we need to be more energized in outreach to people who live within this region because it's a tremendous opportunity. It is a group of people that were were made to serve, but it's also a part of the state that unlike many other parts of the state happens to be growing. And so it's a huge opportunity for us. We've also built capacity both in admissions and in Markham by combining resources that used to be segmented in the access and outreach team. So using that to really build capacity in a singular and unified way has been a meaningful change. Brad Bodenhausen and his team have stood up the employer partnerships unit, which is a really, really important addition. Again, as we think about groups of people that we need to be more successful in bringing to Missouri State University, adults, people who may be employed, but who need a degree to advance further in their careers are a really, really important group for us to establish connections with. Last but not least, I would say we kind of realized the benefits of some previous investments in technology and process improvements. There were a lot of really good, but not super interesting changes that happened in admissions before I started. Some examples include the implementation of a CRM, a customer relationship management tool. You know, things done to optimize our search capabilities when people are searching for a college or university. Other process changes include buying names earlier. So beginning the conversation with students about where they want to go earlier is another really important change that didn't have a much impact last year, but I think is really a significant part of where we are today. Truly last and certainly not least is the idea of culture. So in this forum, we've talked about the importance of building a culture of the idea that enrollment is an all campus activity. And I think again, that's another important area where we've made strides. So going on to the next slide, it kind of gives you a snapshot of, is it working? Are we being successful with these new strategies? And I would say that certainly as of right now, the data are very positive. Admissions people are incapable, generally a feeling joy. They live with worry as their primary motivating factor. They're laughing because it's true. So even though right now we see numbers that that look really good, they're still worried about yield, they're worried about melt, making sure that students who are signed up for the fall actually come when it's time to pay tuition. And then they're already worried about next year. You know, the great thing about having numbers like the ones that you see on the screen is it's great for this year, but they're already like, oh my, how do we maintain this? How do we do better next year? But again, as you kind of look across the indicators, starting with applications, we're up some in applications, we're up about five and a half percent in applications. But we're up significantly in the measure that means the most right now, and that's enrollment deposits. We're up 22.7% in enrollment deposits. That's a big deal. It's good to see that we're consistent in terms of kind of how our numbers are tracking. So housing contracts also up in the ballpark of 15%. And then SOAR reservations, again, another indicator of students who are serious about attending Missouri State University are also up over 20%. So again, we're not celebrating success. We continue to be very, very nervous, but Suzanne, go back because I have more to say about this slide. So we know a little bit about what is driving this growth. We had a really good conversation with the company that helps us look at our data and they helped us kind of think about where the growth is is occurring. So one observation is that virtually all of our growth is coming from students in lower income categories. We have held our own with upper and middle class students, but this growth is really being driven by exactly the kind of student that most state access was was designed to attract. So that's certainly a significant driver. I think another thing is happening in terms of our strategic choices that is probably driving growth in that part of our enrollment segment. And that is that we have chosen to remain a very affordable option for Missouri students. And so this year we chose to implement a very modest tuition increase that doesn't keep up with inflation, but helps us get to where we need to be on the budget. Other institutions, the the school that we lose the most students to, the University of Missouri, has changed their tuition model in several ways, but the bottom line is that their tuition is going to be significantly more expensive than ours next year. And that's even more so than has been in the case that the case in the past. So again, I think that the combination of the new scholarship and our intentional focus on affordability are a really significant driver of of success with that population. We're also growing in our own backyard. A lot of this growth is driven by students who are within 50 miles of Missouri State University. And to a slightly lesser extent, students who are within 200 miles of the university. We have yield rates in that category. So students who have been admitted and then pay their deposit of about 50%, which is described by the consultants we work with as sky high and Ivy League level. This is a really, really big deal and it's a big change from what we've been able to report in years past. I think another thing that you'll notice next year is a lot of this growth is driven by students who are female. A lot of the growth happened among women students. And then last but not least, a lot of the success is coming from students that we engaged with earlier. So students that we didn't begin to reach out to their senior year, but we were instead already known quantities to them. So that is all really, really good news. I will say one last thing on this, which is that one thing that doesn't appear to be happening is that our growth is occurring at OTC's expense. Everything that I've heard about OTC's fall enrollment indicates that they're also going to be growing in the fall, which is great news for us as an institution, because transfer is such an important part of who we are and what our student body is. It's also really important for this region to have two vibrant and thriving public higher education institutions. So I was a little bit worried frankly, that most state access would pull enrollment away from OTC because they are so important. Right now, again, with that big asterisk, it looks like we're both going to be successful. So again, a lot of good news there. I would also just say, you know, there, there is indication that across the country, public universities are going to see an enrollment increase. Again, I view that as good news. Right now, the deposits across the country are up in the ballpark of 3%. So that's good, but it is not 22.7%. So we're doing good in an up year, but I would say that our team has really, really killed it. So I want to give a big shout out to the admissions team as well as to our partners in Markham. This has been an extremely challenging year and they have pulled through with a great deal of hard work and grit. When we talked with our consultants, hey, all right. So when we talked with the consultants again this week, we're, you know, kind of sorting through all the things that appeared to be related to this enrollment success. And one of them was, these are quotes, we have strong operational excellence and that we focused on the right things at the right time. So again, those aren't as jazzy as an exciting new program, but execution is really critical. And I just want to thank the team that put it together. Usually I disregard compliments that come from people that I'm paying money to, but in this case it aligns with the reality that I've observed in working with admissions and Markham. So again, just thanks. So as we think about the upcoming year, the work isn't done. Obviously there will be some new strategies that we need to think about for the upcoming year, the 22 or 23, 24. We have not begun sorting the ideas. One thing I've learned about working in admissions or with admissions, I'm giving the sign for the slide it pass, is that everybody has an idea on admission. So we're going to have a summer retreat where we kind of sort through and prioritize the ideas that we think that have the highest impact potential and we'll be doing that. That includes looking at our tuition model. So you know, does changes in the overall environment provide an opportunity for us to rethink our tuition model? I don't know the answer to that question. We're going to give it thought. I would also add in the category of 23, 24, that we're also thinking about what it's going to mean if we really do end up with a 20% increase of freshman students on campus. And so that has started to look like deans very closely monitoring general education classes. It looks like SOAR adding slots to their annual summer sessions. And then Kelly Wood and her team are also thinking from the student success perspective, what do we need to do now to make sure we're prepared for the students who arrive on our campus in the fall? So admissions, that's a lot. I'm going to switch gears and talk about advising. There are lots of people in the audience who've heard different parts of this presentation, but I think it's worth kind of going through it so you can hear it again. The number one thing on advising is I think it's worth noting that we got feedback from a lot of different sources before we arrived at the recommendations that are included in today's deck. So we heard from external experts, we got a lot of information from the data gathering process that Dr. Jazinski and Dr. Smith led. That was a really important part of the decision. We looked a little bit at what competitors are doing. We, you know, did a really detailed review after the spring registration sequence to see where there are opportunities to improve. The enrollment steering team was a really important conversation partner in all of this work. And then last but not least, we took a look at the student perspective and kind of talked with some students, although that is an area where we have opportunity to grow as we think about implementation in the upcoming year. So the enrollment steering team reviewed all of those inputs and came up with a list of principles that are included on this next slide. I would say the number one principle is really the idea of having more consistency across campus. An environment that fosters student advocacy, including mechanisms that support clear communication, increasing advisor retention, and then fostering a sense of teamwork across campus because just as admissions is an all campus activity, so is recruitment and so is retention. So in terms of the specific recommendations that have come out of this process, there are several buckets. There is no silver bullet that is going to by itself increase student retention. And so we really took a look at structural changes, system changes, process changes, people changes and culture changes, all of which will be important to to really drive our success. So the biggest idea here and probably the the most discussed part of the model has been the idea of each college having an advising center. Not all of our colleges currently have an advising centers and so students have lots of different kinds of experiences. In the colleges with new advising centers, there would be advising provided for the newest students primarily by professional staff. Although we do acknowledge there may be some disciplines where connecting with faculty members earlier is an appropriate kind of way to address advising. The ATC will continue to do its role. As we switch to thinking about structure, excuse me, switch to thinking about system. One of the big system changes that we're excited about is the possibility of an early alert system. So a system that allows faculty members to quickly flag and for staff advisors to follow up on challenges that students are facing, as well as a system for tracking progress toward goals that we would develop and implement. Process changes also really important, you know, we heard when we talked with advisors across campus about some of the the challenges they face because they're not included in the process for communicating curricular changes. So that's one thing. Making sure that we're talking with end users at the beginning of of ideas for new processes or systems. And then making sure again, that we have a good communication strategy that unites our advising community, faculty and students. Moving on to people, we're, we have looked at a proposal to increase advisor retention by addressing some market issues as well as reducing the incentive they have to move from job to job on campus. And then last but not least, culture, again, another really important part of the overall puzzle. You know, culture where we really celebrate good advising, where we know what is advising and what's being helpful to a student. Making decisions about advising in terms of the business case for student success is another important recommendation. And then last but not least is breaking goals into meaningful units that are easy to understand, track progress toward and celebrate. So again, that's a lot. There is going to be a group of people that include the college advising directors as well as the ATC staff, as well as myself. Others from the colleges that don't currently have advising centers who will work together to prioritize all of these recommendations over the course of the summer and think about a way to implement them in a in a manner that has fidelity to the spirit in which they were recommended. So looking forward to 23 and 24, just as you'll likely hear from Dr. Jazinski and the dean's team, we're really going to be focused on implementation in the upcoming year. You can only have so many exciting new ideas in terms of advising and the system is going to be working really hard to to implement the recommendations from this year. We will also however, be engaged in a conversation with Complete College America about things that we can do to close achievement gaps on campus. And so I think that's also going to be a really meaningful conversation for us. So again, that's a lot of information in a short period of time. I'm going to conclude now. Dr. Jazinski and the deans are going to come up on stage. And then there will be an opportunity to ask questions at the end of the presentation today. So thank you.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for taking time out of your Friday afternoon to join us. It's now lost on me that just about a year ago, Cliff called and said, hey, what are you up to? I would like to come and help Missouri State University out through a transformation process. Well, what's going on with that, Cliff? I'll just be asked to come in and cut budget and reorganize academic affairs. I'm like, that sounds fun. Okay, I'm in. Thanks, Cliff, for that invitation. But seriously, my wife Denise and I are very, very pleased to have said yes to Cliff and Gail and Missouri State University. We've enjoyed our time in Springfield and getting to know all of you, working with the high performing deans team has been a pleasure. Not without some pain in there too, right? But really, as we think back for the last 10 months, think about today and think about the future, really reflect upon that word transformation and the word I used back in August, which was disruption. And what Cliff and I have been talking about lately, which is continuous evolution. I think what you'll get a sense from the deans today is really thoughts through what this transformation plan is all about, what disruption means, and how it yields continuous evolution from this point forward. So Suzanne, if you can go forward in the deck, please. A lot of people ask why, why restructure, why go through a academic realignment? Well, as Cliff had described, we really, as a university, hadn't done a whole scale review of academic affairs in decades. Don't get me wrong, we had put together some changes and I think as you talk to the various deans, you think about your units. You guys have done a variety of changes within your units over the years, but not a whole scale review. And so that's one reason, but also as you all did the work for the transformation plan, was very specific in terms of what our goals and actions really need to be. Zora referenced the Strategic Enrollment Plan, very, very important part and you're kind of resurrecting and bringing forth that's very important. And really that whole long range plan is part and parcel to not just enrollment, not just retention, but to all of us, not even just academic affairs, but across all of our colleagues as well. Lot more to the why, but kind of get into the what, the how and the when as we move forward here. You can move forward in the slides. Thank you. Our guidelines really have morphed over time. We put together some initial guidelines back in October. Of course, our listening sessions and all the data that we pulled in from a variety of sources throughout the last many months, allowed us to say with the context of focusing on students' success, we really need to understand departments and schools, their context, their culture. Really to focus on collaboration, again, don't forget, we already collaborate and have many examples today. But we foresee a lot of exciting collaboration ahead and I'll kind of hit that in my closing remarks a little bit later. But one area up on the screen is raising the academic profile. Think back to 1905, beginning of Missouri State University. Think back to 2005, when we became Missouri State University. And think about 2025 or 2035. We are indeed disrupting from a position of strength. We have so many good things going on with regard to teaching and research and service. But we have a chance to elevate and elevate quickly and raise our academic profile. And that's what this team, along with chairs and directors and faculty and staff, that's what we have committed to and we are going to be committed to moving forward. Suzanne, can you go forward one, please? So starting July 1 of 2023, we will now have six colleges and you can see them on the screen. Three affiliate areas, think about the graduate college, university libraries and the provost office that really are support structures for the work of our six colleges. And so let's hear from those areas as they talk about some of the key changes in their areas. And then I'll come back at the end, talk about the provost office and kind of summarize, and then we'll turn it over to you for Q and A. So we'll turn it first to Sean and to Vic and really talk about the new college.
All right, you all will remember that in the fall semester, one of the first announcements in terms of the combined college that was shared with the campus community. We have the the rich history and stability of the the College of Humanities and Public Affairs led by Dean Matthews. The announcement was that Chippa would combine with the Reynolds College of Arts and Letters. And so when you look at the the opportunities of the larger combined college, it's about the destination campus. Think about the notion of trend setting. We've often referred to a publication a number of weeks or probably several months ago that talks about the end of the end of the humanities, the end of the English major. At the at Missouri State University, we're taking a different approach. We're wanting to uplift and invest in the arts and the humanities and the social sciences. And overall, our theme is to protect and invest. And so to move forward, I want to present a couple of examples of some of the changes within the Reynolds College, which are reflective of the combined college. The acronym, drumroll please, is R-CASH, which stands for the Reynolds College of Arts, Social Sciences and Humanities. We're really proud of this name. One of the reasons we're proud of this is because it includes a lot of faculty, staff, as well as student feedback across the university community and beyond. We had the faculty senate that was, you know, one of the things that I said is I met with a lot of the Chippa department heads and Chippa faculty, as well as current Reynolds College faculty, is that we need to make sure that we provide input. And we received a lot of input when you look at the unit exercises, when you look at the the leadership of our staff senate or faculty senate. And so we took that feedback seriously and integrated that into the name of the new college. The the first two schools within the Reynolds College, I'm going to talk a little bit about those. The first school is School of the Arts. This is an opportunity to place three accredited arts programs, being the Department of Art and Design, the Department of Theater and Dance, and the Department of Music. All three of those departments are accredited, but are under under an umbrella of the School of the Arts. So I'd like to to look at a couple of examples of what is a a school naming opportunity look like? Well, what about the the Tess Harper School of the Arts? What can we do with alums, people in the community, people in our alumni network who want to invest in scholarships, who want to help us build facilities? So overall, that makes up the first school. The second school within the Reynolds College within R-CASH is the School of Communication. This is a great example because the School of Communication already exists, really in name only, because there's a rich history of the Department of Communication, as well as the Department of Media Journalism and Film. Now those two departments blend to become the Department of Communication, Media Journalism and Film. The other department that has a rich history within the School of Communication is the Department of English. And so in those first two examples of the schools, I'm going to turn it over to Dean Matthews, but both of those schools have department head leadership. We do have examples of school directors within R-CASH and we'll talk about those in a few minutes. Dean Matthews? We do have examples of school directors within R-CASH and we'll talk about those in a few minutes. Dean Matthews?
Okay, it's all my fault. Well, sometimes you just have to move forward while at the same time retaining every strength that we possibly can. I think the model that we have in R-CASH for the other schools that are going to be created does exactly that. For instance, in the School of Humanities and Social Sciences, we have a grouping of the departments that currently exist within my college. Plus we're adding some strengths by placing the Department of World Languages and Cultures into a new combination with Religious Studies. Two departments that are the bulwark, as far as I'm concerned, of the BA degree. And I'm hoping to see that being enhanced further as we go forward and making it clear to our students that foreign language and cultural studies around the world are exactly what they need to be doing in this world that we live in today. In addition, within this college, of course, is history and political science, which is going to combine with philosophy and sociology and anthropology, which will be joined by the gerontology program that's just moving out of psychology. It's actually a homecoming because gerontology started in sociology, so we're all happy to have them back. In addition, we have two other schools. One is the School of Criminology and Criminal Justice. And you say, well, that's a department. Why is it a school? Well, in fact, what we find looking across the nation that this is a comparable way of dealing with this particular program. It's the largest in my college, the most vibrant. It's one that has all kinds of possibilities for change and a naming possibility as well. Lawyers in the, in the crowd, we'd be glad to have you talk to us about that. And it's also going to be a really good recruitment aid. Because they have to compete against places around the country that are using this particular model. And finally, Defense or Strategic Studies. Some of you may not even know they exist. But in fact, they are a graduate program that is housed in, in the portion DC area in Fairfax, Virginia. They have a master's and they have the only professional doctorate outside of the healthcare area. They have grown exponentially since that, that, that professional doctorate was developed. As a matter of fact, I was talking to John Rose, who is going to be the school director. And he said, well, we've got about 125 in the, in the, in the, in the doctoral program and we just interviewed another 51. I'd say they're doing just fine, thank you. And by having them become a school, again, it enhances their profile. It will help with raising money, which is what they've got to do because they are standalone and they have to basically pay their own way. And in that way, we have created through this college, a series of schools. No extra administrators, no loss of, of any of our admins, our admins, no majors going away, no certificates, no minors going away. It's remaining vibrant and will continue to be in the future.
So the, the College of Business is really no stranger to realignment. As Brogo Stasinski said, several colleges have been through some of these exercises over time. In the nineties, we folded a department into two other departments. Why? Because the personal computer basically made that one department obsolete. The majors were lost. About 20 years ago, we inherited industrial engineering. Most of you today know of that as the Technology and Construction Management Department. They have two of our fastest growing programs right now, Construction Management, the undergrad and Project Management, the graduate level. And even more recently, we got the Merchandising and Fashion Design and Interior Design Programs and Faculty. When change was made in the former Fax Ed program. And with each of those, we saw tremendous opportunities and I have since realized those. We've invested in those changes and it's paid dividends. So we're looking at those three changes historically and now we're looking at the two changes for this particular realignment. And again, see opportunities. Because we believe the two changes that are coming up are really going to build on three goals that we have. The first is program visibility. We're the largest business school for a reason. We've got a wide range of programs that are attractive to both employers and students. It'll enhance student and faculty opportunities. People were surprised to find out 75% of economics minors are from the College of Business. And many of the economic majors over time have been dual business majors. So we see a lot of synergy there. And finally, we think the two changes I'll share in a moment are going to support enrollment and student success. We want to remain the largest college of business and this is going to help us do it. And so with that, I could have the next slide. In July of, of this year, economics will become part of what will be the newly named Finance, Economics and Risk Management Department. We've already had integration meetings and it's off to a great start. A year from now, in July 1 of 24, Merchandising and Fashion Design, which has been a very small standalone program at Park Central's Office Building, will be coming under Technology and Construction Management. Technology and Construction Management will then house all of our non-business areas. That's critical for our AACSB accreditation. And we're going to invest and grow these programs. The economics faculty have already got a sense of what we can do to help improve the marketing for them, hopefully. And cross-market with our business students. We're putting a million dollars into new labs on the second floor of Glass Hall to support the MFD Merchandising Fashion Design Studio or Lab, a new interior design studio and a new accounting analytics lab. And we're getting ready to launch a MoExcel's project that'll add on to Kemper Hall because we can't grow Construction Management without a little more square footage. And I believe you'll see more about that in Cliff's notes coming up.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. John, a few minutes ago, asked us to think back to 1905 and, and in fact, agriculture has been part of the university since 1905. And, and since then, it has established itself as a, a leader in agriculture and agriculture education, both in the region and really throughout the state. And so as we were thinking about potential changes to the, to our college, College of Agriculture. We were thinking in terms of how can we enhance that statewide prominence, right? How do we, how do we continue to, you know, be seen as a leader in the state in agriculture? We have a, a long history of, of developing leaders. How can we raise our profile in terms of developing strategic and innovative leaders? And, and in thinking through that and in reviewing the data that we, we got from, from many of you. It, it was clear that a way that we could do that would be to bring together two of the largest industries in the state into one college. And, and essentially bring the entire food supply chain into one college. From production to processing to distribution, all the way to really putting the food, putting food on a plate. And so to that end, we flip the slide here. So to that end, we are planning to bring the Department of Hospitality Leadership into the College of Agriculture. And then we will have four departments. And the plan will be to take those four departments and to combine them into two schools. Names for those schools have not been identified yet. But one school will have hospitality leadership and ag business education and communications. The other will have animal science and environmental plant science and natural resources. So one school focused primarily on the science side of, of ag. The other side focused on the business, education, leadership, communications side of, of agriculture. Two things that I wanted to mention, just questions that, that I've fielded since this proposal has, has come out. First is to say that when the original proposal was presented, we planned to have this change take place July 1, 2024. And that's when this would launch. But due to really the, I would say embracing of this by hospitality leadership, the synergies that, that we see and opportunities for student success. We didn't think it made sense if student success was one of our goals, to delay that opportunity. In addition, due to some other administrative changes that are taking place, I think John will talk about later in the, in the college. Then it just made sense to us to move this timeline up. So the timeline for this will be really to, to start moving on this now. July 1, 2023 is the intent to, to, to really have, have hospitality leadership as part of the college. Of course, it will take time to, I mean, things are, are moving fast for all of us here at this, at this point. But take a little bit of time to come up with the, with the school names and, and such. The other piece of this is that there's a question about the, the school directors. So each school will have a school director. The feedback we got from the, from the departments was that they really needed to have a kind of remain distinctive, distinct programs within the college. So the programs will have program coordinators. We're going to be starting soon, internal searches for the school directors. And then once we have identified those school directors and have them in place, then we'll be moving forward with thinking about who those program coordinators will be, what the school names will be, and, and hopefully have all of this ready to go. Certainly by, by August, if not sooner.
All right. So we go on to the College of Natural and Applied Sciences. And you just heard the biggest change that, that will occur in terms of department moving out of the College of Natural and Applied Sciences. But as we look to the future, and, and I believe that's a really good new move for the future. And, and I'll be working with them to make sure that that transition is very smooth. We looked at program visibility, statewide leadership and student clarity as, as really, you know, overarching. Thinking about how do we collaborate more? How do we work together a little bit more? Program visibility, we are going to be visible in a week and a half on campus when the fences go up. And now you've got to walk around what's to be future Blunt Hall. So we will be visible, but the inside is going to be amazing. All new teaching and research labs, the, all the new spaces are for teaching and research labs. Some new office spaces, some new, you know, there. And then we'll be, be working on the renovation of the old part of the building. We're going to live and work in that, in the old part of the building as we build the addition. There are no other chemistry labs on this campus, so we will be offering all the classes in the building while the addition is happening. So know that's happening right now. The only thing that's closed down are the lecture halls and a few offices where things, where the two buildings will connect. So, so that's, that's huge. And in addition to that, there's also money coming in for the renovation of Cheek Hall. Really, really transforming the entire college and everything that we do. We are certainly a statewide leader in terms of research, bringing in those research dollars, the research grants, which is why we, we put so much emphasis on that. As we, as we thought about what, what would the new Blunt Hall look like? And then collaborating with all the other deans and thinking about how do we make all of our programs clearer to our students? How do we make sure that students understand the difference between mechanical engineering offered through our Cooperative Engineering Program? And mechanical engineering technology, which is offered through the College of Business? So those, those things are all playing a part in what we're looking at. So if we took, go to the next slide. The College of Natural and Applied Sciences will continue to have the departments that we've got. The one that we're looking to change significantly is the Department of Geography, Ecology and Planning. Recently added a sustainability program, which is not part of their name. And so we need to figure out a way to lift that up so students know that that's available to them. So by next summer, we'll have that renamed as a school to include that. But the other big thing, and helping working across a number of, of colleges to do this, is to develop a a, a, a major in tourism, an interdisciplinary program in tourism. Right now, only Mizzou has a tourism undergraduate program and it's not very strong. We think we can do better. And we've got the courses already on the books for many of those classes to develop a strong program. So that will also probably be led by GGP, but, but will definitely involve a number of others. Our cooperative engineering programs are in civil, electrical and mechanical engineering. We'll graduate the first mechanical engineers next week, a week from today, which is pretty exciting to be doing that. That, that program is led by a program director that Missouri S and T hires, who duly reports to both myself, as well as the dean over at Missouri S and T. So we've got the programs, we've got centers and institutes. And those will all continue within the College of Natural and Applied Sciences. We're looking forward to an awesome year with lots of construction.
Follow that with construction. So the McCurry College is not afraid of construction. So as a, as a relatively new college, we've had lots of growth, lots of development, including buildings and renovations. And, and resources, as we've seen in the, in the last couple of years with the renaming of Professional Building to Camp Peter with our Student Success Center. And when you look at the, the college, the, the bubbles you see in front of you really epitomizes what the college is about. We're, we're truly multidisciplinary, which looks at multiple approaches or sources to look at the same problem, which is healthcare in many cases. With truly integrated practice of whether that's health, whether that's healthcare, or health sciences. All under the umbrella of what McCurry College needs to do and can do as part of. I would put us with the College of Education and any up here for immersive student experiences. Because every single one of our programs interacts with the community, works with our professions. Absolutely builds that workforce need for the future when we look at healthcare. And that ties into that last one of community integration and workforce needs. Why is that important? And this is a stat that I've shared a little bit. It's important because 50, 40% of our workforce is aged 55 to 65. 55 to 65, let that sink in a little bit. That, that's a higher end of our workforce. 40% are in that age group. Well, what does that mean for healthcare? It means two things. One is as we transition through, that age group is going to be needing more in the healthcare fields. It also means that healthcare, as much as many of our businesses up here, will be losing that 40%. And we have to figure out how to replace that. And quite frankly, at the moment, we're not replacing it at the, at the same rate as, as we'll be losing it. So when you look at healthcare as a practice, all of these areas are extremely important. Because we're going to be needing to figure that out, both on the physical and the mental health side. So as we look at the changes in the college, and there are a lot of changes in the college, and we go to the next slide, please Suzanne. There's a lot on that slide because I think it shows you how complex and how, how integrated are the McCurry College really is. So moving from 11 departments and schools, which we currently have. And let's just say, as I said, that the college is fairly new. We've added programs over time. We've added programs over time. We've grown over time. We've grown over times. And we've kept adding the silos of departments. What this is, this plan is, is to move into five school system, five schools. One, which already exists, is the School of Nursing, a flagship for this university, an absolute need in the community. And one with our, our partnerships with both Mercy and Cox, as well as all of our other partners, is going to be a huge need in the, in the future. We already have a School of Anesthesia. A very specific dedicated program to a very difficult pathway into healthcare with a very, very different accreditation process. And it leads us to three schools and they're very complicated because there's a merger of lots of pieces. I will start as you can live with the School of Mental Health and Behavioral Sciences. And that's important because that's the one that we have, that we'll be planning to do for this summer. So the School of Mental Health and Behavioral Sciences will include the former Department of Psychology. The school of, formerly known as the School of Social Work and welcoming the counseling program from the College of Education. This provides us as a center point for this, for the area, for the region. And says, mental health preparation and behavioral sciences preparation is absolutely integral to the mission of Missouri State and the need for this community. That, I believe, puts us in a position to say, we do this, we do it well, and we're here to help build that need for the future. The other two schools, as I said, with TBD, are proposed to start in July of 24. And we've got a lot of questions about this. There's a lot of work there. Dr. Yonkey talks a little bit about the need for pathways to be clearer, for repetitive courses to be to be refined and modified, to provide students with pathways into those careers. So we know that as a generation, the the generation that's coming up, they're looking to come to their undergrad because they're looking to say at the same institution for their graduate school experience. We've got to build those pathways. I firmly believe that by building these schools, we do that. So the one in the middle, the School of TBD, and it's very small above me probably there too, is the Department of Physical, uh, physical, sorry, Public Health and Sports Medicine, Kinesiology and Biomedical Sciences will form together to form a school. And when you look at that, that's mainly a lot of our undergraduate courses. It's a lot of the pathways into pre-health, pre-med, pre-OT, pre-PT, speech-language pathology, audiology, et cetera, et cetera. That's a one place where we can have students come to one school and and actually explore a little bit about what do you want to do in the healthcare, the medicine side? It also includes physical education, which I think many of you know is my home discipline as well. The other school in the bottom corner is just as small, if not smaller, which takes where Victor talked a little bit about the doctoral programs. Well, the rest of the doctoral programs at the university are in this school here. When you look at those those professions, those are the terminal degrees that goes out and says, "Yeah, I'm going to be an occupational therapist, I'm going to be a physical therapist, I'm going to be an audiologist, I'm going to be a speech-language pathologist," and go into that healthcare and say, "This is what I'm going to do." This is where we're going to help that community need, and it includes athletic training in there. There's a couple of nuances in there with some RSTATs and things that are related to the college, which I'm happy to talk about. But what that's doing is RSTATs is a center that provides support for both faculty and students going through research projects. Housing in the same place, there are two faculty housed there, but will have a home in a school. At the moment, they're a program that's outside of any of the departments and schools. So when you look at this, when you capture, we'll end up by the time we get to July of twenty-four with five schools, we have three centers and institutes, we have five full operating clinics, including the clinic for counseling, including PT, OT, CSD, et cetera, and MSU Care is another aspect of that that we don't always think about, but these are clinics that we have. Some questions, I'll take Ken's lead on this, some questions that we've had. The names, the school directors, outside of the School of Mental Health and Behavioral Sciences, which has been a conversation over the year, where Dr. Paul Dill, who has been currently the Department Head of Psychology, the interim School Director for Social Work, we've named him and will be the the first School Director for the School of Mental Health and Behavioral Sciences. The other two schools, so I'll go back, the School of Nursing will have a new director starting in in July, well, actually, in June first, of Dr. Catherine Patterson will become the new School Director for the School of Nursing. And she's moving from her undergraduate coordinator position to the School Director, and anesthesia will stay the same. The other two schools, we've got work to do. These are guidelines, these are posts, there is some opportunity to look at what this looks like. As as agriculture talks a little bit about, we will have a process for identifying the school directors. Those will be identified over the next year of process. Are some of the programs in exactly the right places, or is there some flexibility in those two schools? We can have those conversations. We will be moving to five schools. We will be keeping those structures and building those for those that name. But we've got some flexibility, and it will be the responsibility of me as the dean and the dean's office, working with the new school directors, the current department heads, and everyone else, operationalize this so that we can continue to build the workforce of the future. Because as I said at the beginning, we absolutely need to do that if we are going to be able to do the healthcare, providing healthcare for everybody that needs it in our region.
Thank you. So moving on to the College of Education. So teacher education has been central to the identity of this institution since it was formed, and we have continued to be a leader in teacher education in the state, particularly in the field of teacher certification. And with these changes that we're making, we want to sustain and extend our statewide leadership in both teacher education, but also in developmental sciences as well. We also want to elevate the profile of our college, both internally and externally. And we want to support proactive engagement with schools and community organizations because those relationships are central to all of our programs. So going to the next slide, you'll see what those changes that we've identified will look like within our college. So there are three primary changes, and all these changes are going to be going into effect as of July first this this summer. The first, as Mark mentioned, is that the counseling program will be moving over to the College of Health and Human Services and will become part of that new School of Mental Health and Behavioral Sciences. I, from the beginning, when Mark first started talking about this idea, I thought it was a great idea. And our counseling faculty are on board with this as well because they recognize how beneficial this could be for their work with each other within this field, and also how beneficial it can be to students. So we're excited about that change. The second one is is that we're going to be moving the Sign Language Program from the College of Health and Human Services into the College of Education. We have faculty in our education for the deaf and hard-of-hearing program who have expertise in this area. And it makes sense to to move that program to align with that faculty expertise. And the third change we're making is the biggest one. We're shifting from three academic departments to two schools. And you'll see those on the screen. One is the School of Teaching, Learning, and Developmental Sciences. And this includes, most of our undergraduate programs will be in this school. And it it's comprised of teacher education programs, but also our faculty in child and family development and literacy. And so we've got a lot of great potential for cross-collaboration there between faculty. The other school is the School of Special Education Leadership and Professional Studies. And this is mostly graduate programs, but our special education, under our umbrella of special education, one of our programs is cross categorical certification, and that is an undergraduate program. So you'll see on the screen other centers that are part, or departments that are part of the college. Those will continue as they are. So the Greenwood Laboratory School, the Agency for Teaching, Leading, and Learning, and the Child Development Center will continue as they currently are. In terms of leadership for our two new schools, we have, one of our department heads is leaving the university for an amazing opportunity at University of Northern Iowa. But we have two department heads that are continuing, and they will step into the roles as school directors. And again, those changes will all be happening this summer. So we're very excited about that and excited about the possibility for what those changes will mean for faculty collaboration and for our potential to support student success.
The university libraries is ready, willing, and able to support all of these transformation activities. How are we going to do that? When they mentioned two things. One is to help with some of the sort of overarching things that everybody benefits from. So for example, open educational resources, some great work's already been done at the university and in the university libraries about OER, but there's a lot of work to be done. Also with electronic scholarship, everything from digital humanities to AI to virtual reality, a lot of potential for electronic scholarship in higher education. The second thing we're going to do is focus more on staff. In twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, we were starting a different way of thinking about and deploying our staff resources, very talented individuals in the university libraries. Then this little thing called COVID came along, and we had to push it to the back burner. We're now pulling it back onto the front burner, and we're going to do a one-year pilot study of really rethinking how we use our staff talent that's both beneficial to individual staff members and to the organization as a whole. Next slide, please. There's one way of conceptualizing the way the libraries is organized. Always going to be about content, always going to be about services. In this day and age, library information technology, it just infuses everything that we do. We do run the testing center, just so you all know, if you don't know that. We do operate Hasseltine Library in the Greenwood Lab School, and we're very proud managers and leaders in the Ozark Studies Institute. Speaking of which, tonight, we're going to have a Ozarks Jamboree in the new John Goodman Amphitheater as a kind of a kickoff, lead-in event to the big festival on the National Mall, late June, early July, the Smithsonian Folklife Festival and the Ozarks Program. MSU is proudly leading this region-wide effort.
Good afternoon. I am so excited to get to talk to you a little bit about the Graduate College. We actually started reorganizing in two thousand and sixteen. And this slide shows our longstanding services for the graduate community, supported by our amazing team. And you can take a look at those bubbles and recognize many of these things that we do. The yellow font indicates new initiatives, changes since two thousand and sixteen. Let me hit the high points of those for you. We used to have a degree called the Masters of Science in Administrative Studies that was started in the nineties by Frank Einhelling. It morphed into the Master of Professional Studies, and then it became part of the unit graduate interdisciplinary programs, which also includes the Masters of Science in Interdisciplinary Studies and a grad cert in Individualized Studies. These are great avenues to support funded or other initiatives by allowing academic credit to be associated. For example, Dr. Andrea Hellman has DOE-sponsored funding that allows teachers to get TESL and literacy training, and in the process, they are able to earn their MSIS. Dr. Stephanie Huffman worked with GIP to offer individualized graduate certificates to teachers getting district-sponsored training in literacy and earn their graduates, this individualized graduate certificate. With these changes, our enrollment jumped from somewhere around eighty-one to one hundred and seventy-five. So we added an assistant director to help the part-time faculty director. We established our first international partnership for a dual degree around two thousand and seventeen, and they have been active ever since, even during the pandemic. To date, eighty-five individuals have earned degrees, and another fifteen to thirty are either current or expected to start this coming academic year. That's more than a hundred lives of international students affected by the chance to earn a US degree. Our new initiative, and Zora alluded to this, is on partner-funded GAs. This model allows corporate partners to provide money, support for both a stipend and a tuition fee waiver for a GA to serve in their company. And we have two active and three new contracts nearing completion. This allows us to fund more grad students without using university resources, and it also allows us to share our very talented graduate students with our community. A graduate assistant admissions took over processing applications for international students a couple of years ago, and we added another evaluator to help with that. The Associate Dean's Office took the responsibility for marketing and recruiting and has capitalized on our CRM to develop and launch central campaigns as well as program-specific campaigns to encourage applications through yield. The Associate Dean's Office also uses Signal Mine Texting to remind grad students about milestones like registration, application to graduate, et cetera, and oversees inclusive practices in graduate education. So next slide, please. Many of you have seen Dr. Andrea Hellman's excellent artistic summary of our work to reorganize academic affairs. And not only does the visual capture this beautifully, but her words also are right on target. A little bit murky, bit multi-directional. It meaning still evolving. I just, again, want to emphasize that. It's still evolving. But it's dramatic, dynamic, energizing, and exciting in a way, too. So with that, I will turn it back over to John.
Thanks, Julian. Thanks all. You know, thanks to Dr. Hellman. I asked her if we could share that, and we're so appreciative of her and her description. I'll take a moment, take a breath. Transformation, disruption, evolution. Ten months work, forty minutes. There's a lot more to it, right? And I'll I'll mention a few more changes and kind of come to some summary. Before I do, though, Dr. Vic Matthews is part of the great unbelievable group retiring faculty and staff. Can we just give a round of applause for thirty-nine years, Vic Matthews? Thank you, Vic. And as Vic said, he's going nowhere. He gets to continue to write his books and so on and be at his office, and we'll chat. So hey, look, the Provost's Office, small and mighty, our our team is incredible, thanks to all of you for what you do. But, you know, we're we're a service provider in moving forward, being strategic, thinking about data in different ways, but being service-minded, if you can go forward, please. We have some changes. Chief Academic Strategy Officer and three Provost Fellows. These Provost Fellows, we're so very thankful for, Shuba, Paul, and Amy. They'll be starting here in the next few months. And their their street cred, their credentials, what they do, what they're going to do for academic affairs for all of us. We are just flat-out excited, Ken, for that. So we look forward to it. There's a few other changes to mention, too. Go, next form, next slide, please. So we're thankful for Missy Bledsoe taking on the interim deanship with our College of Agriculture, Chin Fong taking on the chancellorship of Mountain Grove and Letitia, taking on really the oversight, the university-wide oversight of of faculty's success slash watermark. It's going to be important as we move forward. Next slide, please. And so we're not done yet. We've got more work to do. We've got some areas of exploration. You can see them on the screen. There's at least five, actually, as we prepare for our dean's meeting next Monday. I added like two or three others, just so you guys know, but but because we have further exploration to do, and so we're committed to that over the next many months. And so think about reallocation of funding, think about investing in academics. I don't need to go through all the all the particulars up on this slide. But moving forward, we have some monies to invest in growth in academic affairs. Anything that happened at the college level, that money's staying within the colleges. And as you can see in that fourth bubble up there, Cliff has led the charge with the Administrative Council Team, taking proposals to the Board of Governors in terms of cost of living increase, allowance focus, some kind of retention payment, if you will. Really equity funding across the colleges, but also the first time in a while, at least, Cliff, a central centrally funded focus on some positions itself. And then, you know, in talking with Cliff over time, we think about active learning classrooms, the move towards virtual reality and so much more, and really facilities that large across academics. You know, I said, "Hey, Cliff, could I have a dollar or a hundred or or like two and a half million?" Actually, I asked for like five million, I think, but, you know, he said, "Well, two and a half's good," you know. But matched with the Provost's Office and with the deans, we'll have up to about five million one-time monies to invest in terms of our classroom structure, moving towards other technology, et cetera. Last couple of slides here. You may know that the Blackboard contract was expiring. We extended it by one year and challenged three vendors to come out and kind of show us what they have, right? And we're focused on modern and best. We know that the system is only that because it's really about use, use by our faculty, students, and the like. You can go forward. We're taking the proposal to the Board of Governors next week to create a contract with Brightspace D2L. We're very thankful, the faculty that played in the sandboxes that were provided to us, the students that played in those sandboxes to really understand was phenomenal. It really was. We are flat-out excited by this. The number of people that that led this effort, Jeff Pointer and so many others, I tell you what, it was amazing because I I kind of challenged folks back in November, late November, to say, "Let's move." So we're moving. Summary slide. Back to our guidelines, we were challenged. We're challenged to recognize culture and context and to focus on the academic profile and the like. We believe we delivered on that. There's more to do, right? But in this short timeline, one of our department heads said, "That was kind of a a record time, right?" It wasn't about speed. It was really about doing it the right way for the right reasons, selecting a new LMS, injecting the variety of investments, but doing it by focusing on reducing administrative and administrative costs. We were asked to transform. We're transforming. But right in the middle of that slide, it's really important, we're not done. But now it's going to be just a continuous evolution moving forward. I have to say thanks to not just the dean, so many of all of you, our department heads, our school directors. We received so much input throughout this process, and I look forward to the future. So with that, Cliff, Zora, if you guys want to come up, it's time for a Q and A. So with that, Cliff, Zora, if you guys want to come up, it's time for a Q and A.
Let me let me add a couple of comments while this slide is up, and then we'll open it up for you all for questions. You know, we all follow the publications for our sector, whether it's the Chronicle, whether it's Inside Higher Ed, there are others. And we've seen over the last five years, maybe and beyond, university after university, some have closed, some have done significant program cuts, some have done layoffs, some have done program eliminations. West Virginia University announced a $75 million deficit, and as a result, their strategy is to intentionally shrink. That is not our strategy. Our strategy is to invest in academics, to raise the profile, continue to grow and serve our area and our state and our region. And the numbers that Zora shared with you earlier show we're on a good path and that this is working. You know, sometimes you drive around our state and there's construction on the highways and you see these signs, something like completed as promised or progress as promised. When we started this back in August and September, we said, we're going to protect all filled faculty lines. We're going to protect and maintain our staff. People were not going to lose jobs. We were going to invest in our programs. We're going to raise our profile. We're going to we're going to select cutting-edge technology to help us be successful. We're going to focus on collaboration and interdisciplinary work. And we have seen tremendous interdisciplinary work already beginning in our cache between the faculties of Vic and Sean's colleges already and the energy there. Not a single program was eliminated, not a single certificate or minor or major will not exist, not a single filled faculty line was eliminated. And we are investing almost $7 million in our academic facilities and our academic programs and in academic technology. I am so proud of the work these folks have done. What questions do you have? As always, we start with Kishore. Kishore, let's get him a mic. Coming down, coming down. Emily's got one for you.
Thank you so much for working very hard and raising the university. I have two questions. My first question is to President Smart and EVP Zora, and second is to the Provost. I heard Executive Vice President Zora say in her initial remarks that University of Missouri raised their tuition significantly or something. Presumably, that is to hire high-quality faculty and also raise the salaries of employees. I do not know, but presumably. So do we have a plan to hire high-quality faculty that is going to be fundamental to our university and also raise the salaries of our employees? That is my first question. And my second-
Let's, let's, that's a big one. So let's, let's take the, let's take the pieces of that, and I'll start and others can can jump in. So in terms of the tuition structure, if you haven't been tracking this, and there's not any particular reason to, unless you have kids or about to go to college. University of Missouri Columbia used to be about last year, I think, eleven thousand and change for an undergraduate from Missouri to go, and then you would go to a particular college and you might have differential fees if you took business or education or variety of things. Last semester, I think we were about ninety-one hundred dollars, and that assumes tuition and fees over thirty hours. University of Missouri is now restructuring. Remember, I said they're somewhat north of eleven thousand to putting all of their colleges and departments into tiers. And whatever tier you're in, if you're in agriculture tier, business tier, healthcare tier, then there are three prices for all the classes you take, depending on the program you select. And those prices go from fourteen to almost eighteen thousand dollars. That gives us a tremendous advantage on pricing as people learn that it is now five to eight thousand dollars more a year to go to the university than to go here. I think much of that money will go into research, as it should. They're the flagship university. Much of that money will go into their new precision medicine program. Much of that money, they've got a nuclear thing that costs a billion dollars that they've got to rebuild. We did better on salaries last year than they did in terms of across-the-board raises. I don't know what University of Missouri is going to spend their money on, but our board and the budget we're taking to them on Friday, we have tried to put as essentially almost all of the money, new money, into new compensation. And so a part of that goes for paying for pension, but a part of it goes for a five percent across-the-board raise for everyone. We're going to ask our board to do a second retention payment for employees that are with us in July that would get a check at the end of the year on top of that. And then we've created two small equity pools to fund particularly hard-to-attract-and-retain groups of people. So on the faculty side, a significant chunk of money is going into computer science because that group of faculty in particular had huge workloads and were paid significantly under market. We're going to fix that. That's a growing program that we need to invest in. That's an example. Your program grows. We're going to invest in you. There's also a significant chunk of money going into advisors to standardize kind of levels of fee so that it doesn't matter what college you're working in, you're getting a, you're getting essentially the same pay, and we'll be raising those up. There are a handful of others, like it takes us two years to hire an HVAC tech. Well, that seems a long time. So we're going to adjust the salaries there. So yes, there is significant money going into salaries. This will all be available. If you listen to the Finance and Facilities Committee meeting on Friday, it'll be in Cliff's notes. We always do a summary of of budget work. And so as I've looked around, what are other people doing? I'm on the City Utilities Board. That group of people got a four percent raise. OTC is doing a four percent raise. Central Missouri is doing a three percent raise. I don't know what the University of Missouri is doing. Last year they did four percent plus a little bit of other kind of stuff. So we are above what most of the folks in our public sector in Missouri are doing. I'm very proud of that. Second question.
Okay. I'm a faculty. I understand the administrative point of view, realignment, shuffling things around. I understand that that's really good work and hard work. But from a faculty point of view, I would like this for our university, Missouri State University. Every year, hundred high-quality research colloquiums plus hundred high-quality teaching colloquiums. That will expand the academics and our university. It will cost one million dollar per year. I've done the calculations. So my question is-
I'd be honest with you, I didn't get all of that. But go ahead and ask the question.
I would like our, again briefly, I would like our university to organize one hundred different high-quality research colloquiums given by external speakers plus one hundred high-quality teaching colloquiums also given by external speakers. And their colloquium fees and travel, et cetera, will add up to one million dollars. But if we do that, our research will expand, our teaching will expand in a concrete way that I understand. So my question is, are you all willing to do something like that?
So Kishore, your first part of that, I thank you because that realignment was a was a piece of all this. If I can track the whole track of all that, as we think about teaching, research, and service across all faculty and what what our faculty, you know, Brad Bodenhausen, for example, and I went out, listened to all our researchers, talked to Office of Research Administration, Grants Accounting, and so on. We're investing in there. Not sure your specific question about if we're willing to do, but I will say it this way. This group, and I think many out in the audience are willing to do a lot as we think about what our strengths are, strength in those. And we've uncovered a lot of gaps, a lot of opportunities, because all organizations have them. We're willing to look at them and address them. That's why we have five study groups, for example. So I hope that helps shape a little bit.
And let me add, I mean, there, there is going to be a significant focus on research. Brad, do you want to, do you want to add anything to that? Okay, so there is, we are, we are working to to support and grow research. And, you know, we don't have two million dollars of unallocated money right now. And so I think on the Springfield campus, our budget, if if the board approves that, I think there's less than two hundred dollars unallocated because we've tried to push it all into the across-the-board raise. But for next year, as the Budget Committee works, what we've committed to do is to to, one, make sure our salary data is as accurate as it can be. Two, John's going to lead a group that is going to to identify other similar universities to us that also submit Coupa data by factors, right? I mean, we all think we know what universities are like us, but but to actually work with a group, probably a consultant, identify the factors that make our university similar, and then we'll do a salary comparison to that group, both overall and within sectors. And then we're going to be looking at compensation differently next year. So this year, we tried to put everything in the across-the-board raise so that everybody got the same. Next year, we're going to look to see how are we doing by segments? And we have some segments, I would suspect, that we're doing pretty well, and we have other segments that we're doing not as well. Such that we might have a different strategy to increase pay next year than we have this year. Part of that is being able to create metrics that we can compare productivity between departments because that's a part of that analysis as well. Let me stop there. Anybody else want to talk over here on this one? Nobody else wants to take the salary question? That's why I get the big bucks. I get to answer the salary questions. Is that good?
Yes, very good.
All right, who else? We'll come back to you.
Hello. Thanks for organizing this. Yeah, so I'll just be level with you. I'm very concerned, and I'm speaking specifically from the perspective of a gay black man in Missouri, where we have a travel advisor from the NAACP, and most recently, these two very harmful bills that do nothing more than attack our trans youth. And when it comes to enrollment, that's really important, but so is retention. And I know that I've heard from several students, I've heard from members of the community, who are asking the question, should I leave this state? And will we be welcomed in this state? Will we be welcomed at the university? And so I know we lobbied very hard against the inclusion of the DEI language in the budget to prevent us from being funded if we had DEI language. I want to know, did we lobby just as hard against those bills that attack some of our most vulnerable students, particularly trans students? Do we have plans to make those students feel supported? And if so, what are they? And is the university prepared to put out some kind of statement letting not only the students, but also queer faculty and staff know that they are supported and are protected to the extent possible by this university?
Multiple questions there. They're important ones. What I would say, and Dee, I'm happy to call on you in terms of the student support side, so be thinking. What I would say is, we did work very hard to make sure that none of the DEI language got in the budget. Did not get in. The session has three and a half more hours at most. We believe not a single bill that prohibited higher education from being involved in DEI work will pass. And we were engaged in all of those. And so, you know, there was a bill to prohibit teaching certain things. There is a bill to prohibit us having DEI training. There was a bill to prohibit hiring or requiring certain, certain classes. There was a bill to prohibit DEI offices. And guys, those bills have passed other places, right? They passed in Florida and Texas and Iowa and 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 are likely to pass in other kind of places. Did not pass here. We were involved in that work. We partnered with our healthcare providers who who did not want that work, those bills to pass with the Missouri Chamber, who did not want those bills to pass because they were anti-business and would discourage business from coming here. And we believe our strategy of working with people directly with explaining why those bills are counterproductive, but doing that one-on-one and behind the scenes and not issuing press releases or official statements was a strategy that worked. It is our belief, Kyler, that often issuing a formal statement from the university or from me is actually counterproductive and makes it more likely that some of those things pass. We did not take a position on the trans bills. They did not specifically impact anything we do at the university, and we knew with a hundred percent certainty they were, they would pass. And hence, there was not a reason to spend any political capital on them. What we will commit to, every student that enrolls at Missouri State, whether they are transgender, whether they are evangelical, whether they are Arab, whatever their background is, our goal is they they experience no discrimination. They receive the same level of treatment and support and empowerment and encouragement and voice that that any faculty member should be able to teach within that subject they're teaching at their discretion. That's a ditch we're going to, we're willing to die in. Again, those bills are passing, right? Florida passed a bill this week that that regulates who can speak on campus at events. We're not having that here. And so you, it's a delicate balance of when do you say what to whom? And the strategy that is working in Missouri, because none of these horrible things have passed, but for the, but for the the two bills you talked about, and we think that's the best strategy and to focus on the success of our students. Dr. Cisco, anything in terms about particularly supporting our transgender students on campus you want to talk, you want to reference?
Support. So we're not changing our focus or our emphasis there. So we'll continue to have programs and services.
Programs we have continue to operate. They will still be called Multicultural Research Center, Multicultural Services. We continue to have the strongest anti-discrimination statement any university has. And Kyler, I will tell you, in our state, the state, I sent out a statement to all faculty, to all of our staff a couple of weeks ago in terms of our commitment to treating everyone the same. Not a single other university president in our state made that kind of statement, made any statement at all. We stand with our students. We stand with our faculty and staff, but we're going to do it in a way that doesn't alienate people that have control over us. Who else? Right here.
I want to thank President Smart and Provost Jocinski and the Deans. I'm not sure I totally understood the purpose of some of the changes that were happening with realignment, like the merging of my college with another and so forth, but now I think I understand a bit better. Still got some questions, but it's come through. I wanted to ask, though, about where athletics and its budget fits in the future.
Yeah.
I guess it's, you know, I understand that athletics is part of the university experience. It's a recruitment element, and it's important for a lot of reasons, and that there are very few programs in the country that are not subsidized from the general university fund, but it probably also- But it probably also doesn't come as a shock that athletics budgets make a lot of faculty grumpy. Uh, especially when, you know, salaries are not, uh, near QP averages. I heard some positive things that we're rectifying that faster than, uh, than some others, but we're, the fact is, we're still far behind some of our peer institutions. So I'm wondering what the vision is, uh, for, um, uh, for athletics and what, what the limit's gonna be on, on, uh, on spending, how the balance is gonna be made. Because in my college that has just been merged with another, there, there is an email going around how uh, we've been dominating, uh, foundation awards and performing very well. Uh, but our salaries are the lowest and, uh, tuition for our students is the same as for anyone else. So in effect, we're subsidizing things like athletics a lot more and it, it lowers morale.
Yeah, so great question. And, um, I, I appreciate that there's, uh, there are people that would like us to eliminate or reduce athletic budgets. And we have done that. Uh, six, seven years ago, we evaluated our entire athletic portfolio. We eliminated one large team that, that had significant travel costs. And, um, to the tune of about a million and a half dollars of savings. Uh, so we have that. And every year, our athletic director, who's here with us today, one of the things he's evaluated on is whether he stays within the budget that he has. Um, as we look at, at budgets generally, and I think you gave a fair summary of, of where we are, let me give a little more detail. And so, uh, we supplement, so there, there are 365 within one or two Division One universities in America. We're one of them. Twenty-four of them make money. Three hundred and forty of them are, are sup- are supported by their universities. Uh, presumably because they think it's a good investment. That it's a good investment with their communities to engender support and connection, that it's a good investment yeah, in the, in the marketing and recruiting side, uh, for students. That it's a good investment in helping us raise money. Uh, the example I gave in Faculty Senate yesterday was our big, our, we had an $8 million gift last year from a guy who is, who loves Missouri State football. And, and so oftentimes, and it wasn't to football, it was to help us fund the, uh, the brand new residence hall. And so uh, a lot, there's lots of overlap in that. How much are we supplementing, um, uh, our, our athletic programs? It's about $11 million. And that comes from two different budgets. A four and a half million or so comes from the auxiliary side. And the other part comes, so $6 million or so comes from the operating budget. The operating budget is $250 million. And so as you think about, I mean, we're talking about 2%, 2.5%, 3% of our budget goes to supplement sports. And yet it's more complicated than that, right? Because we've got 400 student athletes. And so while we're funding scholarships for about $5 million, the bulk of those students are also paying for a part of their education, often at out-of-state rates. And so we actually use our student athletes to bring in significant money. Um, and you think about, well, $6 million supplemented out of, out of the overall budget. And a student pays a little less than $10,000 for a year. If we lost 600 students as a result of us not having athletics programs, it would be a wash. We wouldn't have gained anything. If we lost more than that, we would be in a hole. And so in my mind, athletics is a tremendously important part of an American college experience. I recognize that everyone doesn't agree with that, and that's okay. But it is why literally every public university in Missouri, from Truman State to the University of Missouri to us, to everyone else, has athletic programs. All of us. And we're all supplementing them. And if you compare how much we're supplementing, either the percent that we're supplementing or the, or the actual dollar number to the other public universities in the Missouri Valley Conference, Illinois State, Southern Illinois, Northern Iowa, Indiana State, Murray State, et cetera. We are right in the middle and it's very comparable. And so this is an investment that our sector as a whole, for the student experience, for, for fundraising, for the community experience, believes is meaningful marketing. And I can tell you, it helps us in the capital, guys, when the, after, I mean, we'd played awful football for 30 years, right? And all of a sudden, in Bobby Petrino's first year, we made the playoffs. We took that foot, our state senator, our state senator, by the way, who, who kept any DEI language from going in the budget and who got us a 7% increase, our state senator personally wanted to take our football team all around the Capitol and have a picture with the governor. Guys, that's pretty damn important. And I would also tell you, our board chair played varsity football for the Bears. Enough said. Again, I get it that everyone's not gonna agree with that. I get that.
Cliff?
Yes.
Uh, we have some questions from our 400 participants on Zoom.
Great. You guys know there are 400 more of you listening to this on Zoom. Very good. Suzanne, take it away.
All right. So, uh, we have some specific questions about academics and then some specific questions about advising. So I will start with the, um, academics and the Okay, so the first one is, having tourism and hospitality in different colleges will create confusion among students. It seemed hospitality and tur- tourism go together. Can you please explain the reasoning for developing tourism in CNAS and dividing the two disciplines that go together?
Um, so it, it initially started, um, with, um, hospitality and GGP working together along with a number of other people. So there's been a team working on this. Um, I really think it's going to be interdisciplinary. I think hospitality leadership is going to play a significant role along with the College of Agriculture, um, in developing it, um, and in making it work. So, so I think that there will be a very broad range and every, those, both departments will be involved with that tourism major. Um, on our campus, it has to have a home, and so we'll figure out a home, but, but I really, um, I really believe it will be truly interdisciplinary.
Okay, next.
Okay. If each college is structured completely differently, how can we say that faculty roles, inputs, and even job descriptions can truly be equitable?
I think I first started that. So first of all, I wouldn't say it's completely different, right? Uh, I've used the analogy, by the way, as we think through transformation and change, uh, for those, uh, fans of arenas out there or stadiums. You know, if you know about Chicago and Soldier Field, iconic football, American football stadium. Um, but, you know, they renovated, they changed and they put something on top of it that didn't quite match the, the structure of it. But over time, they've morphed that too. And I, that's kind of how I would liken what's happening is across three or four of the colleges, there's a lot of similarity right now, and they'll probably move towards more similarity. Um, that continuous evolution piece will allow us to, to probably morph that over time. But as we think about schools and departments, as we think about programs and specifically majors and the functions thereof of faculty and staff, that core has not changed. What else would you guys add to that?
You know, and I, I, you know, I might just add that, that it's really hard to do all the change at one time, right? And it's, it's easier to, to, to set out the structure and you, you work the structure and you see how it works. And other people then want to come in line more with that structure. And sometimes personnel roll off, that gives opportunities to restructure things. And so again, this is setting up a framework and beginning to, to operationalize it. And we talk about evolution because we expect over the next several years for the colleges to continue to change and they will begin to look more like each other, unless there's a reason that they don't, right? Because Dave's colleges is thriving pretty much as it is under that model. And so why would we wanna blow that up if that particular model works really well for him?
Cliff, I might add too, that as, as we think about other universities, you know, many months ago, I thought the closer we can get on clarity across all of the colleges, the better. But I went out and shared this with you and I shared it with the deans, uh, researched all kinds of universities, not just in the valley, but in the region and so on. And it was very, very clear, very apparent to me, as you look at titles and colleges and departments and so on. Uh, there were a lot of legacy systems that are then built over and not, I didn't find one that was consistent across. So that's part of the evolution of American higher education and Missouri State University.
Other thoughts on that one, folks? Okay, Suzanne?
Okay, another academic. It seems like a missed opportunity to not consider the redundancy of having two biological departments. How is this making the pathway clearer for pre-health students who are trying to choose between two similar departments? What is being done regarding the redundancy of courses taught between the two departments, biology and BMS?
I'll start with that and then pass it on to Mark. So, um, there will be a faculty committee that will be working on, um, duplication of courses and, and getting rid of redundancies that we have across the two colleges. Um, and that group will start working and have a deadline of February to, to work through that. Um, and, and to begin to look at that. Um, and then I'll, I'll let Mark talk a little bit more about what he's thinking about in terms of some of the pre-health programs. And, um, you know, it, it would be really important for us to, um, work towards, um, not having two biology programs, degree programs on our campus. I think there are ways that we can distinguish some things and make, um, what Mark's doing in his college related to the health, healthcare, um, work for that and be, be appropriate. And so I see, um, a lot of, this could, um, end in a variety of different ways. And I don't think, um, we didn't want to define what that end looked like, but let the faculty, um, work on that. So I'll let Mark.
I, I think, to be fair, over the last six months, we've had a lot of conversations about biomedical science and biology. And, and quite frankly, I think it's time to stop having those conversations and start working together to fix those conversations. And what I mean by that is we don't have two biology departments. We have a department of biology and we have a biomedical science department. And the biomedical science department does things very different from biology, and biology does it very different from biomedical science. So what do I mean now? Is that there are some overlaps. Yes, there are. There are fundamental cores to any program. If we go back to any of our majors, there are fundamental pieces that they overlap. We wouldn't be here if they didn't. They overlap and without X happening, we can't do Y. We don't have math, we can't do physics. Um, there's all of these aspects that we have it. What needs to happen is we need to get behind the concept of what does a student need? What is their career pathway? Where are they going? And how are they gonna get there? If that's a pathway through biology, then that's fantastic. Let's take that pathway through biology to whether that's pre-med, pre-health, pre-P T, pre-O T. If that's through a kinesiology applied track, then let's go that way. If it's through a biomedical science track, then let's go that way. Pigeon hoing and not allowing that diversity with those students doesn't help us at all. The gen, the Gen Z student wants to know how to make that pathway, how to move it forward and where we need to go. Our responsibility as a university, as a faculty and a group, is to build those pathways clearly. The process that's been outlined has been outlined by Tammy. We will be working together collaboratively to figure out the best ways that students can make their career choices and not be bound by what John talks about, a legacy system of what we've called departments and schools and structures. So moving forward, what we should be doing is instead of comparing and having two departments or comparing, is saying, what is it that our student needs? What does our workforce need? Where do we need to be? And how are we gonna help them get there? So quite frankly, but my, judging by my response, it's been a conversation we've had over and over again. I've been here four years. And quite frankly, I think Cliff will tell you, he's been here president for 13 and it's been an ongoing conversation for 30. It's a conversation that needs to stop happening and we need to do something about it.
Yeah. And, and you know, there, a, a piece of, you know, uh, there was an earlier question about why and everything exact, you know, cookie cutter exactly the same right now. Well, a piece of it is, we need to work on some things and get some input from others, particularly faculty in these departments and, and with our team leading this, get this figured out and then move on, right? And we don't have a, I don't have in my mind, I don't think John or Mark or Tammy does either, exactly what that looks like, other than let's figure out what works for the students and what makes sense in the workforce as it now exists. And let's move forward. We're gonna get that done in the next six months. I hope many of you in those departments are gonna be involved in that.
We have a couple of advising questions. Uh, the first one is, uh, Zora talked about reducing incentives to move to other jobs on campus rather than increase incentives to stay in one position. Is the intention to make advising salaries more similar across campus or to make it more difficult for staff to change jobs? Please clarify. Thank you.
That's a great, there's gonna be several new forms that an employee has to fill out to move from job to job. Uh, so the intention is, um, yes, to increase equity of pay across the, the colleges and across the university, uh, which again, will provide people with incentives to stay in their current positions instead of moving to job, to, from job to job. Some of what that looks like is a career ladder where longevity and position would be one factor that would be considered. Uh, and it would give advisors an opportunity to progress in their current positions rather than requiring them to move from job to job in order to get that, uh, pay increase.
But we obviously will not prohibit people from applying for jobs that are open.
That's correct.
But it shouldn't just be because the advisor in this college makes $2,000 more than the advisor in this college, right? That's what we're trying to eliminate by bringing people up to the same level.
Okay, and kind of on that, uh, Zora indicated that some col- oh, if some colleges don't have advising centers, Zora indicated that some colleges may not be served as well by this model. How is this making advising more consistent across campuses, across campus, if not all colleges follow the same model?
So, you know, as we reviewed the feedback that came in through the qualitative research process, the, the information gathering that, uh, Dean Smith and Provost Jocinski led, there was definite interest in increased consistency, but it was with an asterisk. It was increased consistency, but recognized that a one-size-fits-all approach might not be appropriate. And so again, the movement is toward more consistency. It's unlikely to be perfect consistency. But, you know, in the simplest language, what we want is for students to have access to advising services regardless of the time of year that they're seeking those services. Or regardless of, you know, the workload that a faculty member is currently experiencing with their service or with their research. So if a student needs help in the, the immediate term, they're able to access that. So again, as with all of the things we've talked about today, this is largely about seeking balance and making progress where we can. But I think that, you know, in two years' time, we, we will see significantly more consistency in students advising experiences across campus.
Yeah, and I, I think that, tell me if I'm wrong on this, but it's anticipated that every college will, will, over the next couple of years, have an advising center, particularly for freshmen and maybe for sophomores. And that's not true now, right? Some colleges do not have that. And so as every college develops that, then that gains consistency. An asterisk might be, our musical theater fa- faculty have a cohort of 20 musical theater majors. It might make sense that they continue to work closely and advise them, right? That would be maybe a group that doesn't fit. But the goal is, we wanna have professional advisors advising all of our students in the college they've chosen, they're undecided, through, through a separate group, their first year here. The data would say that helps increase retention.
Cliff, if I can, I know we're getting close to the hour here. I just wanna make sure, I don't know, Suzanne, if there's any more questions, but as I look out in the audience and think about administrative colleague, uh, council colleagues, you know, we know that academic realignment, advising changes and the like impact everyone. It's not just within the colleges here. But as we think about university advancement, finance facilities, registrar's office, you know, on and on and on. It impacts all of us. We just want to say thank you because as we think through accelerated change, we know that there's kind of backroom impacts and we thank all of you for your help and your assistance moving along.
I do have a couple of more, if that's okay?
You have more?
Oh, oh, I have a bunch.
All right, keep going.
Okay, here, here's one.
Starts in eight minutes. I'm just putting that out there.
Okay. Uh, making sure that all students have a successful SOAR session includes them hearing from their academic college to gain crucial information about their selected program. How will the shifts in the middle of the summer impact the consistency of the information being shared with incoming students attending SOAR?
So from, from the college of business's perspective, so I'll use economics. So we've already met with them. We're already getting everything in place to be able to, to talk some prospective students about economics. Even two weeks ago, we'd barely made the decision. I was at a college fair in St. Louis. A student came up to the table with their parents behind them and said, hey, I was down at Missouri State last week. They'd been here for the FBLA event. And that student was all excited. He was gonna go somewhere else, but he had learned about Missouri State. And so I started to explain to them that economics is not a part of our program. The parents' response was, well, it wasn't economics, I was in business. Interesting response. Another family came up, almost virtually the same response. And so I think across the colleges, it'll be relatively easy when we've got faculty, advisors or professional advisors to be able to quickly get the information that's needed to get the students into the classes they need their first semester. Remember, most of these students are gonna be taking general ed. Very few of our students on campus are taking a deep dive into any particular major their first semester.
Suzanne, do you want to comment on that from a marcon perspective in terms of the work your team will be doing over the summer?
Sure. We are, the, the, most of our prospective students, current students, they use search. They don't really navigate around our website. And so uh, any program that they search on, anything, the information that they're looking for will be available on the website. And so um, that part will be, that will not be changing. What will be changing is as we restructure uh, under each of the colleges, the various schools, departments, centers, et cetera, you know, those changes, but the information will be readily available for our students.
Do you have anything on SOAR you want to add?
And for those on Zoom, I don't know if you heard that, but Dr. Sisko was talking about Dean's team representative and uh, Dean Wall. We can talk about your role in that.
Yes, uh, I'm, I'm serving as the, the dean representative to SOAR. So I've already met with uh, Dean Weber, Dean Sisko, or Dr. Sisko and Priscilla Childress. And so uh, one thing that we talked about in a recent meeting is on R-CASH. And so if someone has a question, well, if a student's coming in who's interested in political science, are they gonna be advised on the CHIPA model or is something gonna be different? Well, the answer is no, we're focused on continuity, continuity, consistency, making sure that any student incoming is not gonna have the script changed on them. And so that's a commitment. And then we also are already starting to make sure there's no barriers for students. So when you look at needing an English class, um, whether it's math, English, any of the general education classes, the deans work together to make sure that we have uh, seats and access for those incoming students. So that, that's all something that, uh, all of those things are something we're committed to.
And Sean, Mark and you just had an email exchange, I think it was this week about opening up slots and so on. So the collaboration exists between.
Anything else, Suzanne?
I, I'll do, we still have a lot more, but I'll do one that I think will be um, as the lowest paid employees of the university and the backbone of many of our teaching programs and much of our research on campus, will graduate students be receiving a raise in their GA and TA stipends that is above the rate at which faculty receive their retention bonus?
So uh, grad student pay goes up the same percentage as everyone else's pay.
Okay.
All right. And with that, so all the people that stayed home and didn't actually come, presumably they're also not coming to the prize giveaways outside. So we're gonna go ahead and uh, wrap up for this group. You've been a great audience. I appreciate your engagement with this. I, John took a deep breath in the middle up here. I hope everyone that was worried of, what are you people gonna do to our stuff? Can take a deep breath and know that things continue, programs continue. The goal is the experience continues to get better. Uh, and I'm looking forward to a great year. We'll need many people engaged on the implementation of this. And so there is work to come and uh, um, but for now, join us outside at Goodman Amphitheater if it's not raining. And uh, we're doing a uh, jamboree tonight at seven o'clock. Uh, it's a Maroon Nation event, a preview, as Tom said, to the Smithsonian Folklife Festival that we're sponsoring in Washington DC. That starts at seven. Uh, I hope I'll see you at one or both of those events. We'll continue the conversation. Feel free to send me an email on anything that was, that you didn't get to ask or you want to follow up on. We'll make sure you get an answer next week. Thanks. Have a great afternoon.